Terry and I, probably wait to let you introduce yourselves whenever it comes time. We have a consent agenda is in front of you on your agenda. Are there any questions concerning items on the consent agenda?
I have slight technical problems that we're working on that, but you have the consent agenda items, you guys are okay.
Do you have any changes?
No.
Anything bad? Okay. Remind me what, I can't remember the name of it now, the Stronger Connections or?
Stronger Connections Grant?
Yeah. What is it?
That's the Mental Health Grant.
Okay.
We have a counselor through that grant.
Okay, yeah.
Two counselors actually.
Any questions? Then I would receive a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Move on to administrative report?
Yes.
I've got high school pulled up.
All right, high schools.
As you can see, a whole lot going on. We had NHS induction in November, we got basketball going on, upcoming events, Christmas extravaganza next Monday night, we've got faculty Christmas breakfast on Wednesday with our monthly faculty meeting, and then we've got Christmas for our students next Monday. So, not a whole lot else going on. I did get to go to the Show Me Safer Schools conference Thursday and Friday in Columbia. It was put on by MSBA Center for Education Safety, and there were some very good speakers from around the country there. It was very worthwhile conference. And I already shared a little bit of stuff with Dr. Spence, found out that through MSBA, they are a member of COSPA, which then, one of the speakers who was there, we actually get the benefits with them through that association, which is something that hopefully we don't ever have to worry about, but it's nice to know that we have, should that need ever arise, because it was a good conference. Any questions?
I might also point out while Mr. Schmidt's talking about safety, Mark James, Willow Springs alum, was named Director of Public Safety for the state of Missouri.
Mm-hmm.
So appointed by incoming Governor Key House, that's kind of a nice thing for a Willow Springs alum to.
Yep. Good position.
Okay, at the middle school, our numbers are hanging out right where they've been being, right there in the mid 350s, so nothing much new there, attendance has been pretty good. And so, as far as the events, I'll let Colton take care of that. Some of the celebrations that we have going on at the middle school, we get the MoBeef presentation on the 19th, so that's always a fun day when they come and the FFA gets involved and they do a presentation at the middle school during lunch, and I cannot remember, what'd they name the heifer?
Hazel.
Hazel, Hazel makes an appearance, and so the kids love Hazel, and so that's always a fun day. Currently, we're finishing up our iReady testing, and I know the kids are celebrating about that being over. And then, Mr. Coughlin started a brag board for deer season, just thought I would mention that real quick. He got some stuff signed by some celebrity from American Archer, or somebody that he knows, he's got some hats and things that he's going to hand out to the kids. So, if they kill the deer, because we are going to reward that at the middle school, and they had perfect attendance during deer season, then they get in it for drawing for some of that memorabilia, so just kind of neat thing that we have going on here at the middle school. We're finishing up, our teachers are observing one another, I'm sitting down talking with them, so that's all going good, it's always really positive to see teachers getting in other teachers' classrooms and picking up on things. You know, I always say if we just pick up one thing from another teacher when we do that, it's very beneficial, and it's good positive conversations that we're having. We have a lot of events planned for the last week of school before we get out for the semester for break, as far as our Culture and Climate Committee, celebrating our teachers, all of that Christmas stuff took place there on that last week, so. And at this time, I think we're going to do, is it Ms. Hopper?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hopper is going to come up and present a little bit about what's, as far as some data, and I'll just turn it over to her and let her explain what she's going to do.
Oh, sure. Okay, all right, so I just have three things to just share with you, and I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible. I want to talk about our iReady data at the middle school with and about IEP students, so I separated it, so that we can see, you know, is there much of a difference? RTI that we're using in the middle school, and then I just want to talk a little bit about our student success plans that go with Senate Bill 681. So, yeah, our iReady data, we, with every test, we get reports that will show us how many students are performing at grade level, above grade level, one grade level below, and then two grade levels below. And so, with our first assessment that we took in August, which is, it's not always a prime time for testing, because, you know, we're doing it the first week of school, and so sometimes kids just, it takes them a little bit longer to get back into the swing of things, but you'll see, I've just divided it, I've got fifth and sixth grade, and the next slide is seventh and eighth. With, that's everybody, every student in fifth grade, every student in sixth grade, they're 21% at or above grade level, and 31% in sixth grade. The difference when you pull out those IEP kids is really not that much. In some areas, it's going to be bigger than others, but we have IEP students that are scoring at grade level, it's just depending on what their IEP is in. We have some kids that it's just math or language, but not necessarily reading. And this is just kind of, I'm a visual person, I like to see things, and so it just shows you kind of where we're at, we're in the process of testing right now, and we just weren't done enough to bring additional data from our second test. But this is our seventh and eighth grade, exact same thing. Seventh grade, you know, had a little bit of a difference. What I thought was interesting here was probably the biggest discrepancy. Our eighth grade students, they are often our lowest scoring students on the iReady, and I'll just be honest, I think a lot of that can sometimes be effort, attitude, because by eighth grade, they, you know, think they're all that in a bag of chips, and they don't always give their best effort, so. But this is kind of where we stand right now, as far as our students that are reading on grade level, and our students that are not reading on grade level. Do you have any questions about?
This is like the baseline type thing?
Yes, this is our baseline, yeah.
This is usually the lowest of the three.
Right, yeah. Now, I will say the second iReady test that we were in the process of taking, I'm not sure why, but it seems to be the hardest test. And I've heard several teachers mention that the second test is the hardest. I don't know why, but you would think that it would get a little bit easier, because we're moving more into grade level material, and so they should be, but I don't know if it's just standards beyond what we've gotten to, but yeah, this would be our baseline, this is where we start, and hopefully we're making huge gains along the way. Now, how do we deal with our students that are struggling? Last year, I went to a conference, and we had several teachers went to a conference, RTI at Works, and we got together and we totally revamped our intervention program, and so we started a Tier Two intervention, which is the targeted interventions, we're looking at what students are doing in the classroom and where they're studying, so it doesn't have anything to do with Tier Two as far as those iReady scores. We're looking at, we're multiplying two-digit numbers in math, and if we have a group of students that are struggling with two-digit multiplication, those are the students that we're going to pull for some Tier Two, just to give them an extra boost, maybe try a different instruction, maybe they just need to retake an assessment, or redo some classwork, and that's the opportunity that they get to do that. Each grade level has created their own plan, so we don't have two plans in the middle school that look alike, because fifth grade has totally different needs than eighth grade, and vice versa. And so, we do this during their time, so we have about a 35-minute time, fifth and sixth grade is after recess, seventh and eighth grade is right before lunch and recess, and we have, the teachers have their own system of how they determine who goes to what Tier Two intervention, how the students know they're going to get to that Tier Two intervention, and if students don't need Tier Two intervention, they're getting some enrichment. Teachers are working on, I know Ms. Lewis, I visited with her, and she did an experiment that was going along with what she was doing in the classroom, but she just didn't have time, and she has big classes, and it was just going to be very difficult to do, so she did that during her bare time, and the kids loved it. It changes regularly, every grade level again is different. Fifth grade is about three weeks, they plan for three weeks of intervention, seventh grade is a week or two weeks, just depends on where the kids are at. I think that's probably the key to, you know, to building this plan, is what do our kids' needs, or what are our kids' needs, and how can we address those? They do use current classroom grades, formative assessments, teacher, you know, they collaborate weekly, so they all have an opportunity to get together, and, you know, Little Johnny's not doing good in reading, but he's doing good everywhere else, well, maybe it's a behavior thing, and, you know, they just talk together and they work and figure out how they can help Little Johnny during this Tier Two targeted intervention time. So then we have the Tier Three, this is where we address those kids from the first two slides that are two or more grade levels below. And we have two interventionists in our building, we have Amy Schmidt, who does sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading, and Kate Yakovleva, who does fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth math, and Kelly Worble does a group of fifth grade reading. And this is when we're looking at those students that lack the critical, those situational skills, and we're able to pull them, sixth through eighth grade, they do 45 minutes, you know, every other day, so we're not pulling them from core classes, typically I think they come from like PE or interactive class, so they'll go to a classroom for 45 minutes and then come to intervention, or vice versa, and that's where they go, and they really get to work on those skills. If they're at a third grade level, that's what our teachers are focusing on with that student, third grade comprehension skills, or third grade multiplication skills, you know, whatever the student needs, that's where they're going to focus on those foundational I will say, I asked Amy and Kate just today, you know, we talk a lot about how it's working, and I asked them specifically, you know, how do you know that what you're doing is working? And Amy said, well, she's had eight out of 13 students this year move out of Tier Three into Tier Two or Tier One. That's a big jump, you know, because again, some of these kids are at second, third grade level, and we're getting to them, or getting them to at least one within one grade level below, or on grade level. We've had five out of 17 sixth grade students move from Tier Three to Two or One, and those are both in reading. Fifth grade and seventh grade are still testing, so I couldn't, she didn't have numbers from them. And then Kate emailed me, she has had eight out of 18 math students in fifth grade, seven out of 16 in sixth grade, six out of 12 in eighth grade, and nine out of 25 in seventh grade, but it could change, because again, we're still testing, and she's still working on getting that data to show whether or not the students are making the progress that she wants to see. I asked the grade level teachers, you know, when we talk about Tier Two, how do you know that it's working in your class? The obvious is classroom grades, assessments, just classroom assignments, but the biggest thing that every teacher mentioned was students are gaining confidence, they're not afraid to raise their hand and answer a question or ask for help. And in middle school, that's a big thing, kids don't like to ask for help a lot of times, but they are really, you know, in our Tier Two intervention, it's small groups, our Tier Three is small groups, so they're getting some of that one-to-one time, or two-to-one time with a teacher, and it's really helping them to just build their confidence, and their self-worth is growing, and that's key when we're talking about, you know, education. Any questions about intervention? I know I kind of go on very fast, but I just want to move things along, I don't want, I could keep you here all night, because I like to talk and less to say, but anyway. Moving on to Senate Bill 681 and student success plans. If you read anything online about student success plans or Senate Bill 681, you're going to see that they're actually called reading success plans, but our district chose last year when this came to be that we were going to call them student success plans. And basically, what Senate Bill 681 does is it requires all LEAs to implement student success plans for students identified with substantial reading deficiencies, or those at risk or diagnosed with dyslexia. And very, very simply put, once we have assessed students with the iReady, elementary does the dyslexia screening, we look at the data at any student that is, that meets the criteria for a reading deficiency, we design a student success plan. And we use iReady, that's one of these approved assessments from the state that can be used to determine whether or not a student meets the criteria. The process of an SSP can be very tedious, and Mrs. Picard can attest to that. We have to test them within the first 30 days of school, and that's part of, you know, why we test now, I guess, that, in that first week to two weeks. Now, there's been talk of moving that test closer to the end of that 30-day period, but I don't know that any decision has been made about that, but just in kind of hopes of getting those kids a little more acclimated to a schedule again, coming to school, and all of those things. Once we do the assessments, then we, we're looking for their performance in the different domains set aside by DESI. Can you click on that chart?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, these are the requirements that DESI has given us in determining who is given a student success plan, and if you, we've got...
Is that better or worse?
Is that better? Okay. So, we've got the different domains that we're looking for, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and so on. Our kindergarten and first graders are tested, or we're just looking at one thing. Now, the iReady assesses them in all of this, but we're only looking at the scale score in one area. And if a student in kindergarten or first grade meets that criteria, their score's lower than the cut score, then we have to give them a reading plan. Second and third grade, it moves to a little different. If it's either one of these, or two of these, or this, or at risk for dyslexia or dyslexia diagnosis, they get a point in. So it gets a little more difficult as you move through. Fourth grade and fifth grade, it's any of them. If they're at risk in any area, they're going to have a plan. Now, you can go back to...
Go back.
Yeah. Oops, backwards. Can we go back one?
Yeah.
Can I make it go back one?
You probably can, but I won't.
Probably, okay. So, that's part of the assessment, and then we're looking, we're analyzing that performance data. And once we've identified those students, then we create the plan, so, that one?
Okay.
Sorry.
You're good.
Yeah, no, I was going to pitch in work.
This keeps me engaged in the process.
There you go. So this is the plan, this is a plan that's actually created by our elementary school teachers. We had one that was a spreadsheet, and it just contained a lot of stuff, and it was a little bit overwhelming, and so the elementary teachers got together, and they're like, okay, this is what we need to see, this is what we need to know, here it is. And I will tell you that I've talked with Angie Jester at Mount Davidson, so we talk a lot about reading plans and stuff. Her school has actually, her teachers have actually, I don't want to say stolen this, because I guess they gave it to them, but they have asked for this, because when I showed her, and she showed her teachers, they were amazed at how concise and put together it was, and so I think that speaks very well for our elementary teachers. But this is just our data collection sheet, and I make one of these for every student that meets the criteria, and this is where we store all of the data, this is where our teachers will set goals, they will keep track of the interventions and action steps that they take, and progress monitoring data and notes. All of their iReady information, all of their iReady scores go in this chart up here, and then based on the last chart we looked at that had the different domains, they're going to determine which target concern we're looking at, because kindergarten is just phonological awareness, so there's no need to look at vocabulary and phonics and all of that. Now, it's going to be there, they'll have access to it, but it's not going to be a target for them as we go through. And then if you go back, and then this, I just threw in an example, like this is a plan, and I just dotted out the names and all of that, but this is what a plan would look like as it's completed, so, and these go from teacher to teacher, so if Little Susie's in third grade, this plan is going to move with her to fourth grade, so her fourth grade teachers are going to have access to all of that, they can look and see kind of where she started, and how has she progressed or not progressed, and what interventions did her third grade teachers do, and if you, not necessarily with this one, but I just add two, so like, everything from second grade would be down below, so I mean, they're going to have access to any intervention that the student has had since we began with the student success plans, and so it's there for them. And then obviously, we're going to provide intervention at the grade level, and Ms. Carr, would you like to talk about your, kind of, any of that, or?
Well, basically, what we do in the elementary is we, Randy is third grade, Randy Slade and I'm fourth grade interventionist, Audrey Foster is second grade, Colleen May first grade, and then Jessica Lunch for kindergarten, and we work with students that have some of those markers that were identified in the iReady plan or in the iReady test, the results of that, and so then we schedule our students that we see throughout... And so then we schedule our students that we see throughout the quarter or throughout several weeks, and then that's who we see. And we do small group instruction based on whatever the needs are. We group the kids according to the needs depending on however many we have, and, I mean, I pull some kids from different classes that have the same need, and then we all go back to my room, which I encourage you all to go. I don't think any of you guys came out to the trailer, the gated community, but it's very nice up there.
It's very nice.
Yes, yes. Anyway, we have, we see students according to their needs depending on what they need, and then we have several groups. I service about forty-six throughout this quarter alone. And then that changes for the elementary on the quarter because that's when we get the grades and the data input, and so that's when my schedule will change. Teachers in the classroom, I know at the fourth grade level, they all do small group instruction in their classrooms also with reading and math, and so they also service kids, some of the same ones that I see, and they work with them also in the classroom. And so they're getting a lot of help, not just from me, but from their classroom teachers. So we're doing our best to work with this group and help them, you know, get rid of these success plans. And it takes two I-Ready tests that are passing to get rid of the student success plan, so...
Okay, you can, oh, wait, I have to...
You've got to now, it's just...
One of the requirements is that we communicate with parents, so there's a letter there, but you don't need to. I mean, it's just a pretty much a form letter from DESI. And then obviously, phone calls, student-teacher conference, things of that nature. We're communicating with parents, making sure they're aware of what's going on with their kid, offering them resources for home, offering summer school, things of that nature that may help. Now, at the beginning, the first, with that first I-Ready assessment, that's when, the first time that data is reported to DESI, but we don't do it. I-Ready does it for us, so they're just sending everything directly to DESI, and then we just kind of pick the ball up from there. And I think it's, I'm going to have to check with Chris Wagner, but I think it's February when we kind of report, okay, these are our final numbers, and this is what we're looking at. Okay, so this is...
Okay, don't know what that is.
I don't know.
We'll just cancel that.
Okay. This is, these are the numbers of student, student success points we have in our district right now. Before, I mean, don't look into here and think, oh, my gosh, because remember that first chart that I showed you, right here, we're looking at one thing? And then we moved to second grade, and it's like bam, there's like seven things we're looking at. Last year, we had the ability to exempt students. If, if a student, I mean, as teachers, we know students don't always test well, if a kid doesn't feel well, there's a lot of different things that can go into how well a student performs on a test. And with the I-Ready test, you know, I hate, I know a lot of teachers hate that, it basically boils down to that, to determine if they have a plan. But last year, we were able to say, little Susie, she really, this one test score is the only thing that's bad, that's the only thing that meets the criteria. Everything else, we can put together a body of evidence and show that she's fine, that her reading level is fine, her skills are, you know, her abilities are okay. But they took that away from us this year, and it's, if you meet the criteria, you have a reading plan. And again, going from one criteria to, you know, seven, that's going to cause a jump in numbers. And it doesn't necessarily mean anything poorly about kids or teachers or, or programs or anything. It's just we're looking at a lot more criteria, you know? One other category, one other domain can give you a reading plan. So don't be frightened by that number. But without that exemption, it, that's what has really inflated our numbers. Because last year, this is the number that we, we gave out. I mean, and it, they were not, it was not that numbers. Our numbers only went up significantly this year because of the lack of exemption. We, we just can't, we can't say no, we have to provide them with a plan. And then as Ms. Picard kind of alluded to earlier, in order to remove yourself from a plan or have a plan removed from you, you have to demonstrate proficiency, proficiency in all foundational school areas. In other words, all of those domains that you tested low in, you have to do that twice in a row without getting any intervention. If you do that, we can exit you from the plan. We do, we can exit a student if they qualify for special ed in the process, if they get tested and they have a reading deficiency and will receive services there, or ELL students, we can pull their plans to exempt them. But for every other student, you know, we can only remove them if they, they score proficient in two consecutive assessments with no intervention. And we're, we're close, we have a couple of, I can't remember how many, Mrs. Wardle and I talked about this just the other day, there's two or three fifth graders that I think with one more assessment could exit. So, I mean, I think, even, even if it's just two, I mean, I think that's a celebration because this is really very stringent and it's, but our teachers are doing a great job of, you know, meeting the needs of our students and making sure that everybody gets where they need to be. Those are, any questions? Good job.
I would like to point out, though, that on the, the success plan that she had up there, each grade level is about the same, but there's, some of the drop-down boxes show all the different ways that each teacher does things to help, like there's, I know in kindergarten and first grade level, there's like book bags that go home, and there's sight word cards, and I know with third and fourth grade, there's stories that we read in class, and those get sent home and signed by a parent. They, they do things in the classroom. So all of those drop-down boxes have a variety of different choices for, and it's different for each grade level.
And teachers have the, the ability to go in and change anything they need to, add things, take them away, add new boxes, you know, whatever. But yeah, if you were to pull down one of those drop downs, there's, each grade level has quite a list of different, different interventions that they're using, so...
Does that go, how far does that go with the student through...
It's, it can, it can stay with them through high school, yeah. Hopefully it doesn't, but it has the potential to.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Hopper.
Thank you. Are you going to ask us around?
Very good.
To Marty.
If there's questions, ask her, I'm going to ask Mike up here. She probably wondered if I had spins with all that, and yes, it does. You know, the way I look at that with some of these, like these test scores, you know, if you have your, your best free throw shooter on the team, shoots ten out of ten four days a week, does practice, hits seven out of ten, all of a sudden, there's, there's any need to intervention. You know, we're seeing some of that, some of our top-notch, super-good kids, long test, they fall short or something like, how in the world does that happen? But anyway, it does, and we, thanks to these guys, we've got some great plans in place, and, and I think that's actually what's going to...
Good metaphor. Mr. Rogers is an excellent metaphor, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, well, thank you.
Good. I'm impressed.
Awesome, yeah. Once in a while, I'll come up with that. Yeah, once in a while. But so true, we've got to do what we've got to do, and, you know, it's, it's all about student achievement. But I'll go ahead and jump to this, because I was going to share with those things. We've been having some conversations in elementary, because of these changes, we're going to do what we can do. So we're meeting, I've been meeting with the leadership team, interventionists, have some conversations. I met Coach Wagner last week, because we're just now finishing up the second round of dyslexia screening. All students have to have three dyslexia screenings per year. You know, we used to just have to have one, then there's certain flags, we, those students were tested again, but now they want every student tested three times, which is a lot, it's a lot of time, but we do it. Just finishing that up, we're actually in the middle of that, and then we have our I-Ready, second round by race scores. And again, we take that data, we look at it, and we look at the student, we look at all these exempt students, we have to do what we have to do there. But with that data and with these, these teachers, we're having some good conversations and trying to figure out what we can do and things like that, what direction we need to go. So a big shout-out to them and for Crystal for keeping this data for us because ultimately, like I said, it's for student achievement. And, and I'm very confident in the conversations we're having and the things that we're doing. I don't think we're doing anything wrong, we're just going to see what we can do better and, and where we need to go and what direction. Also, kind of shifting gears, gears here, Kay will mention this, we got to meet with our student leadership team and kind of start those guys in elementary, fourth graders, get them ready for fifth grade, maybe become a little more independent, things like that that they're, they're going to do, so... Anyway, kind of jumped in there because that's where we left off, but back up here to our enrollment, pretty consistent. I will say, I think next month, our enrollment's going to be down a little bit, based on this report, if that's what it's at, but I do think we've had a couple more students that's, that's moved out, so, and we'll, we'll worry about that later. Attendance down a little bit, still not too bad. But, you know, this is the time of year, you start dealing with sickness and things like that in elementary, district-wide actually, but we're dealing with that. But also, things going on, I don't know what else is going on in the area, but I'm quite confident tomorrow night, we'll have the biggest crowds there is, and we're down at First and Second Grade Christmas concert. That'll be a packed house, kids love it, parents love it, great turnout, and, and the kids do a great job, so they spend quite a bit of time practicing, I hear a lot of singing going on in the building in Mount A. That's the time of the year, so we have our faculty meeting, of course, this party after school on Wednesday, we all get together, just have a short meeting and have a good time. As you know about the Christmas extravaganza, Santa Claus is going to be in town, so stop up and see Santa, Mr. and Mrs. Claus, to my understanding.
Yes, yes, and then possibly other...
Possibly, yes.
All right, that's awesome. That might be appearing.
And it is a good time, so... Also, through the next week, we have an assembly, a school-wide assembly in elementary. We recognize the character trait encouraging for kids. They enjoy these, these rows and shines, we get together twice a quarter, it's, it's a good experience for kids to know how to gather during assembly, and we do some neat things there, and then of course, we've got Christmas break, Christmas break coming up. I want to give a shout-out to, this year, I've done something a little different, got a culture and climate committee in place, and they're a big help with the, with the events, kind of read, attempt for the building, things we can do and, and stuff like that or don't need to do, whatever. So I appreciate them and so on. And Kay, to make sure of this, about, we've been having some older kids go read to the younger grade levels, and I find that's a big thing. There's talk about, someone mentioned about confidence, or they love reading someone you know, the third grade to preschool, that, that's a big thing, so, anyway, like I said, kids will touch on some of that, and I'll leave it to them. Any questions?
Who does your dyslexia screening?
Interventionist, yeah. Usually, what's it take to third grade level?
We usually take, it doesn't take a full day, but depending on the schedule, we assign a day for each grade level. So when we got back from Christmas break, we did first a day, second a day, and third a day because kindergarten had already done theirs, and then they'll do dyslexia screening again in January, and then, I know, at the end of the year, so in April, we'll do all four grade levels, not fourth grade, just kindergarten first, second, and third.
And it's all of, like, all, all interventionists do what grade level?
All interventionists.
So it's not just the grade level.
And it does, the record helps with that, too.
Yeah, makeups and stuff when kids are out seeing, things like that, so it takes a little bit of time.
Is this the first year you've had to do three?
No. This is the second year.
Same year. Last year also. Did you find very many, like that second and third screening?
I don't think we found, have we found any, actually?
I am not completely sure on that. I do the screening, but I don't do the evaluation, like the grading of it, so I don't know how many have dyslexia.
I contacted DESI myself to ask those questions as to why, because it did make sense to me, but again, they're the experts in that area, they talked about...
Question doesn't always make sense.
Yeah, right, but, so anyway, I did, we still have to do the test, I was just, so yeah, so... They talked about the different fonts and things they're exposed to, how those, those markers could show up later. But I actually couldn't tell you for sure, but I don't remember if any, any of these students.
I think there were less than ten, because I do the scoring...
Yeah.
And then put that, and, I mean, there were in...
New ones, less than ten new ones, or less than ten at the beginning?
Less than ten new ones.
Okay. I think they're...
Last year. Yeah, I mean, by the end of the year, let me just say, yeah, there was, there was not very many at all.
Any more questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The final address of...
Did something happen to you this last week?
We'll get there.
We'll get there. Just wanted to make sure that's covered.
Yeah, it is, don't worry. Also, nice to see, I'll point this out real quick, I guess my brother got held back about eleven years or something, thanks for returning me his cam up about a couple times.
I've always been a man of the stuff, you're not the only one.
He's a big sister. Yeah. You're consistent with it, figured out more about this a little bit, but I'd suggest here, first of all, honestly, I just want to say thank you guys so much for even the opportunity for me to come up here the entire year, it's just been great. Getting able, being able to interact with the students and get all sorts of feedback, and just being able to come up here and talk to you guys and give their input, so grateful that we even gave this opportunity. So, jumping into things, a lot of big things have happened. Start off with some sports, we have not only one, but two major feats completed. Chloe Jones and Colby James both achieved one thousand career points in their high school basketball career, and they're both just juniors, so still a lot of points to come. Most athletes, some of them, they may not reach that feat until maybe their senior year even, so. For them to do that, we got some great athletes, great athletic department, a lot of stuff going. And this one's also sport-related, I consider it sport-related, but another one of our students, Will Clarkson, actually performed at the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, so that was pretty sweet, seeing one of our own classmates on live TV. I'll say that was pretty cool, I'm sure you guys can testify to that, too, someone we know on TV, especially in something like the Thanksgiving Day Parade, so. In clubs, a couple of things happening. In FBLA, we are currently testing this week for the district contest, so one of our contests, FBLA will do a test, some of them are a hundred questions, some of them are a few less, but there are all sorts of different topics, test over it, and then we'll be graded at the district level and maybe win. Hopefully some of us win, get to advance to state. FFA, we have Thanksgiving Day coming up, that's where we celebrate Thanksgiving and Christmas together. Mr. Walden has provided the deer, also, if you haven't heard, Mr. Walden is a father now, so congratulations to him. And then also, our fruit is coming in, so those of you that are old with fruit, you guys are going to be really happy pretty soon. A couple of our members went up to a swine facility contest, which is basically, in that contest, they go into a swine facility, judge it, determine whether it's suitable for swine, or if something's out of order and whatnot, so that was cool. And we also celebrated Mo Beef Days, Hazel the Heifer came and made a visit, and then what you guys wanted to hear, I know we don't like talking about myself, but this was a feat that was pretty achievable for me and I'm proud of, but I did place first at the state and the state level for my fall speech this last week, so great feat.
Congratulations.
Unfortunate circumstances on how I got there, but I did it for another person, so that's another story in, in itself, but all in all, a good thing, very proud of myself and proud of everyone who helped me there. At FCCA, they're currently helping out, and they plan on helping out with Lear Chaney's Senior Project. For those of you that don't know what that is, they're doing a senior prom, not senior class, but senior prom, he's doing with that, FCCA is going to help with that. Interact Club, you guys have the bell ringing going on, if I'm correct, signing up for that, always fun, and also helping with food bags at lunch. Beta Club is selling raffle tickets for a gift card wreath, and it's more than just gift cards, there's gift cards on there, tickets to, I think even some Cardinals games or Oles games, all sorts of ransom shows, so really get there, if you want to buy some raffle tickets, find a Beta member, me, if you really want to, find a Beta member. So, a lot going on in our clubs. And some school news, hosted by Interact, we have our food baskets, which is just about every club I can think of, and even some other groups, put together a Thanksgiving basket that went out to some people. And then, as we speak right now, Bears for a Better Christmas, they're doing their toy shopping right now, so where a couple of our students are, and Coach Wagner and some other people, and they will be handing out toys this Saturday, so Bears for a Better Christmas.
Set up at six o'clock Friday night at New Gym, anybody that wants to help.
Got that?
Yeah.
Sweet. Middle school, a lot of things going on, so this month, I talked to the middle school and the elementary leadership teams, always love hanging off of them. Middle schoolers give me a treat sometimes, they are a fun group to handle, takes me back a little bit. But they had, and I absolutely love this, this is one of the coolest things I've heard, they had their dodgeball tournament, student leadership team made a trophy for them, and I believe the fifth and the eighth grade ended up winning, but a dodgeball tournament, I can only imagine, that would be an absolute blast. And I asked them, I asked them what they thought about it, rated it on a scale of one to a ten, they all screamed it was an eleven, so absolutely loved it. And then they also have a door decorating contest coming up, and I do believe they are looking for some judges, so any of you that are maybe interested in judging some doors, hit them up. Character trait assembly for second quarter, that's coming up, and then on the thirteenth, the middle school girls will have their game in front of the entire student body. And then the student leadership team also went around, asked a couple businesses for donations for the school store, and for getting stuff for socials and all of that, basically stuff for the school, ended up bringing in six hundred twenty-five dollars for that, so great to see that. They got gift cards, and then they wrote thank you notes to all those businesses and donors. And the student leaders... And then the student leaders are also going to the Senior Center to help serve food on December 12th. And then the middle school is also having a food drag contest. They're using those donations and they're going to send home all that stuff to some people who may be less fortunate. And the class that brings in the most stuff does get a pizza party, so a lot of temptation there. Elementary students, also a fun group to talk with, we've learned a couple of things about. Like you said, they have their, the fourth grade students have kindergarten buddies, so they will go down and read to the kindergartners. So like we said, it's a great opportunity for the fourth graders to read to the kindergartners. And I'm sure the kindergartners love it as well, getting able to talk to some big kids. And then another thing that I absolutely loved that I was unaware of, you guys might, but it is what is called flag, and that is where a student will go, and they will learn, they teach them basically basic flag etiquette, they learn how to fold it, learn how to put it up, et cetera. So teaching our younger generation some nice flag etiquette, absolutely love it. Then school-wide, we have the Christmas Extravaganza on the 16th, five to seven, any of you that want to come out. And other than that, that is really it. I asked the students for comments and concerns in the district, nothing came up, so everything seems to be rolling really smooth. Any questions?
Certainly, you cannot leave us without mentioning the phones.
I do, but believe it or not, no one's even said anything, but I mean, phones, so keep that in mind.
Think the senior prom they're having is a co-collie candidate?
I think they said prom, I didn't limit it right there. Before they were there, I mean, they just threw it out already, so.
Go thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys.
This last year, appreciate you.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
And Toby Brotherton will be with you next month. She will be our new student representative. Toby's a junior, going to be our first female student representative to the board, so thank you again.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I think we're ready for the Interact Club.
We're thinking they could get out of here early tonight, but.
Like you said, we can't handle another moment, so we'll get through here quickly.
Would you like the clicker, Mrs. Hatch?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, well, we are Interact Club. I'm Mrs. Hatch, I'm the sponsor. I just started being the sponsor this year. We are a community service-based club. Our motto is service above self. We are a branch of Rotary International. And I do have just a few members with me tonight, many of them ducked out tonight to go shopping for Bears for a Better Christmas. I guess that's a suitable excuse to duck out on this. But I have three seniors with me tonight, Emma Wiles, Heidi Weimer, and Logan Mullins, and then I have junior Ian Hoy with us. And I'm just going to give you guys the clicker, and I'm going to let you walk them through our slides about some things we've been doing and are going to do this year.
Okay, so about Interact, we've been distributing food through the community using the Thanksgiving baskets, and then next week, or this.
The 12th.
The 12th, we'll be doing the packing for Munch, which is always, I enjoy that. Interact Club organizes at least two projects every year, one that helps their school and their community, and one that promotes international understanding.
This is the four-way test. I think, can we make them do it? Would you guys like to perform the four-way test with us? This is what we say at the beginning of all of our meetings, and this is not just something that we say at every meeting. This is a way that we strive to live our lives every day, in the things that we say, the things that we think, and the things that we do. So is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it be good, will it be precious? Will it be good as well to all concerned? Classic Club photos. Yes, I remember, I was missing my day, but that was as many as I could get together. We're up to 29 members now, and we continue to grow. But that was just kind of a snapshot of a few that were available that day for a picture.
I remember a couple of years ago when it was like 10 people.
Now we have 29.
Do you guys want me to go?
Take it away.
The Interact Club believes in, like, as she said, the motto is service above self, and we want to make it clear that we want to give our time to help others when they need it, and we really want to get involved in that. Take action to make a difference in people's school, in your school and community. Being able to provide yourself to make everything around you better, being able to leave this place in a little bit better place than when we found it. Leave the school in a little bit a better spot, leave the community in a better spot. We discover new cultures and promote international understanding. I know we did a fundraiser for water in someplace, didn't we do that?
That was Uganda. That was the Change for Change Uganda last year. And this year, we've had a bake sale, and we're still trying to work on some fundraising for that, but we're thinking that we're going to donate to the Nehemiah Fund, which helps install wells in Pakistan.
Yes, that helps us discover new cultures in that area, what they have to go through and what they have to live through, and us being able to help them by providing money, water, anything that we can, just to help those people. And we become a leader in our school and community. We have officers for this thing. We have an ability to progress to that level. Being able to help organize events, being able to do whatever we need to for the Interact Club, so that we can help those people better. And we just have fun, lots of fun, makes new friends. I didn't know Charis Cochran, for example. She was a friend that I made in Interact Club. I went to tour, what was it, Convoy of Hope in Springfield, and we packed seeds, and that was the first time I ever got to meet Charis and all these different friends from that thing. That was one of the first times I met Will Clarkson, when he was in Dia Parade recently. And that was just a lot of fun for me, a lot of fun for all the Interact members who went to Convoy of Hope that time, and just in general, going to all these different events. It's a lot of fun for us.
In the drenching booth, we had several members volunteer to get dunked at the Bear City Festival, me included, which my stepdad showed up with 20 bucks for, my family didn't take turns that, which was very fun, and he offered about $5 to other passersby's. So that was really fun. Did not have any time to get used to the water. It raised a lot of money for organizations. How much did we?
I don't know how much exactly we raised, but Mrs. Brower did tell me that Interact Club raised more money than any other organization at the Fall Festival for Bears for a Better Christmas.
Then in November, we had the Senior Citizen's Breakfast. That's where a bunch of some members will go to the Senior Citizen's, Senior Citizen's breakfast, and we just help serve food, drinks. It's a lot of fun, and it's really nice to connect with them.
We do that every month.
We do, too.
Yeah, this is more about our Thanksgiving food baskets. We put together baskets for people around the community that need food. Yeah, so good stuff. We made two this year, yes.
This is our schedule for November and December going on. Right now, we're going to collect the food for the Thanksgiving baskets. We already did that. We have the two baskets set up. The Senior Citizen Prom, Larry's Senior Project.
Larry's Senior Project.
Bell ringing at different times. We've done bell ringing a couple times already, I believe.
If anybody wants to ring, get all the.
Get us some money, please.
I'd be happy to.
We have the senior breakfast that's happening. What is the senior breakfast happening?
The Senior Center Breakfast. That's their monthly breakfast that they have.
I was a part of that.
Yes, you were there.
Senior breakfast, we have to get all the people, we got the wire. Fun fact?
All right, our motto is self, or service above self, which is established in 1989 Council on Legislation. It was named Interact from combining the words international and action, and interacting with the community happened to be a great part of that. The first Interact Club was authorized at Millboard High School, Florida, the USA, on November 5th, 1962. We have 14,911 Interact Clubs around the country, and the founder of the Interact Club is Paul Harris. He has founded the organization to inspire closeness, fellowship, and mutual helpfulness in his fellow men.
I think it's awesome that we have so many interactors that are willing to provide their time and effort and money into providing something that's better for themselves. I think this is an extremely great thing, that it's getting more and more and expanding, and that even our school can provide those numbers.
Yes. Anybody have any questions about Interact Club? I am so rude. I also have with me Jacob Brotherton. He is our media specialist. He was here to snap a few pictures. I'm sorry I did not introduce you in the beginning. Very rude of me.
Is it just for juniors and seniors, or is it about?
Nine through 12.
Okay.
I hear lots of good things about this club throughout town.
Thank you.
From personal experience, they've been a big help in many ways, and always a joy to work with.
Thank you. We hope to continue to grow, and I am thoroughly enjoying being the sponsor, so that's something that I hope to continue doing and get better at doing, so. If you guys know of any volunteer opportunities, let me know. Maybe we'll be able to help.
Then we thank the Rotary Club for.
Yes, absolutely. That wasn't too painful.
Well, congratulations to Miss Hatch for willing to be a sponsor this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So teething for you, too. All right, guys?
Okay, next time, the board superintendent evaluations, I'll provide you guys all the superintendent evaluation form. We're doing paper copies this year, and if I can get those back somewhere by the end of the year, around then.
As in the calendar year?
Calendar year, yeah, that would be good. And I think we're going to put the board evaluation, self-evaluation off till the next month. So we'll get that to you sometime this month, the blank one, and then we'll do that the following month. That way, we're not doing both the same.
So we're going to be superintendent in January and board in February?
Right, yep. Any questions about that? All right, APR discussion.
Did they leak with my clicker?
I can't hear.
Somebody run him down. All right, Coach Wagner, do you want to show the video first that you sent?
Yeah, if you got it, yeah. I just got here. Mainly because we, this was our night to shop for Bears for a Better Christmas, and this is.
You sure you emailed it to me?
I did.
Okay. Not showing up there.
Who knows, it was a video, so tell them what happened to it.
It's not in my inbox.
It's not my scent. Anyway, something's. Get on the Bears for a Better Christmas base. Never mind, later on tonight, and you'll see, we do a video every year of the convoy that leaves Walmart, and so it's really neat to see how many carts we pull out of Walmart. Tomorrow's our shopping day in here in town. It used to be, it used to be my cross-country runners, but I don't coach anymore, so it's going to be Miss Brower and myself who's going to go to go to Tractor Supply, the Wagners, the Dollar General, we used to hit Dollar Tree as well, but no more of that. But anyway, it's a, it's a great program. We're helping a lot of students, helping a lot of children within our school district from birth to age 15, and we always, we always help about, last year, I think it was around 350, 350 kids that live within our school district, and we've been as high as almost 500 in recent years. We've had, we've had, our numbers have kind of fluctuated depending on the economy at the time. So we are, we are expecting around 350 again this year, and we've relied heavily on community donations this year, and it's been, it's been tremendous what our, how much our community steps up and supports this program every year. It's almost gotten to the point that all we have to do is say, hey, it's about that time, and then when the checks roll in, we don't, it kind of, it kind of sustains itself, it seems like, anymore, and we do a couple of fundraisers throughout the course of the year, and but it pales in comparison to the community support that we've received. So I appreciate all the businesses that give to that, and we're going to do our big toy giveaway this Saturday at Mumford Gym, and so so I don't think anybody in here plays old man ball, but you're going to have to relocate, they're going to have to relocate, but it's a, it's a big, it's a big event. Big enough, we used to do it at Munch, and now we do it at New Gym, and it's, it's been a, that's because of the amount of space that we need to make this happen, and so very, very good cause. And we had, I think, 17 kids that helped us tonight, and it was, it was a, it was, it was really great to see them excited to do that. And then many of them are going to be back on Saturday to help with, to help be our elves for the giveaway. They take families around and give them the items that they need, so, all right.
Kudos to Chris and Aaron Brower, I think, you guys have been, it's probably our longest-running project that we have here in school. It's been going on for a long, long time.
We know this is at least the 25th year. I've been involved in it 23, and Aaron's been involved in it every year, so it's, it's been, it's been a, it's, I try to tell the kids, if they, if they don't participate, especially on the Saturday giveaway day, they're robbing themselves of a blessing. And just, just being able to help somebody, so. All right, let's talk about APR. This is our annual report. I think this is, I don't think I've talked about APR sooner than, sooner than the January board meeting in many years. And so, so that's, kudos to Desi. They've had, they've had some rule changes that they've, that they've installed that is helping us to get this data to you earlier, and get it to the public earlier, and let you know the health of our district. I do want to tell you that this is just one of many measures. I say this with the MAP test, I say this with the APR as well. But this is just one of many measures that we can use to help evaluate our, our district. Accreditation is tied to it. We are, starting next year, it will be, our accreditation will be based on a three-year rolling average. Kind of that magic number is, is it 70 or 75, Marty, that we, that we don't want to dip, we don't want to dip below, dip below 80, really, but 70. I think it's 70 is the, is the magic number. We don't want to dip below, because that's when we'll start working on action plans to, to try to maintain our accreditation, so. Give you a snapshot, there's three years' worth of APR according, under IMSA six rules, and our total this year was 79%. We were down from 83 in 2023, and 84, almost 85% in 2022. Notice that our points possible has changed. This is because of different rule changes that have had, happened each of the, each of the last three years. And in some, in some things that we just, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't receive points, but we didn't lose points on either, so. So anyway, this is, this has been the greatest number of points possible out of the three years. And like, and starting next year, accreditation will be based off of a three-year average. So this 83.7, and this 79%, plus the next year will, will be the, will be the three-year average that we use to look at, look at accreditation purposes, okay? There are two categories, two major categories in our APR, performance. This is anything from MAP test, or the, or the end of course exams in high school, any, any success-ready measures such as the ACT, our technical skills assessments that are given in our CTE classes. Let's see, what else? And then, and then our 180-day review that we do every, every year of our previous year's graduates, and and the continuous improvement, I'll go over what those are, what those indicators are here in a minute. How did we compare? I said we were at 79% this year. That, that looks, that looks really low in the SCA, but if you look, we're, we're, you know, we're just like one point away from being in that top tier in the, in the conference. You have Thayer, Thayer Mountain Grove, that, that's about where they scored last year. Thayer was up a little bit. Mountain View Birchtree made about a 10-point jump from, from 2024, and then everybody else was, was either steady or maybe just even a little bit lower than what they were from the year before. And then here are some of the non-conference schools, and where they, where they scored as well. There are, there are others that I could put in there that, that would, you know, that have very similar scores than us, if I go over, especially like to the east of us, but we typically look at the, you know, like, the mixes. But we typically look at the, you know, like the mixes, just Nixon, Willard, Ozark to start off with. And then look at schools like Hollister, who are the same, have a... Who are a similar-sized district than what we are. So, performance, I mentioned performance a while ago, being one of our indicators, one of our two major indicators. We look at academic achievement. This is our, like I mentioned a while ago, our MAP tests, our end-of-course exams. I'm hoping that since we have a little bit later board date in January, that I'll be able to show you the balance scorecard and give you an idea of where our students scored on the MAP test last spring. So, I'll dive into those numbers a little bit deeper next month. Student group achievements. This used to be like called subgroups or the super subgroup. They just call it the student group achievement now on the... In IMSA-6 APR. That's Black Hispanic students who receive free lunches through direct certification. That means that they are receiving benefits through SNAP, TANF, or they are in the foster system in the state of Missouri. This does not include any students who apply for... Apply and approve for free lunches on campus. So, these are numbers that come directly from the state itself. Students with disabilities and then our English learners. I will tell you, we saw that on our... We saw this on our balance scorecard back in June, that we graduated a lot of English learners. And our pool that is going to be tested, or a pool that's actually has the EL tag to them, that pool of students is the lowest we've ever seen it since we've had the Russian community in our district. So, we're gonna test about 40 students this year. And that's been... And we had eight graduate, but we've also had about 20 students who have moved out of the district to other districts, especially around the Springfield area. Academic growth as well. Growth is a measure of how, basically, to put it simply, how students do compared to the previous year on the MAP test, okay? And then there's like this average... There's an average number that we go by, the average, pretty much the average number of students that showed growth from the previous year. And then there are some assessments, like American Government, for example. That's the only social studies test. How do we show growth in social studies? Well, the logic is that social studies and English 2 are... The English 2 EOC are very similar. So, they have a metric that they use to compare how they scored in English 2 to how they scored on American Government. I don't... I'm not gonna go into the science of that, but that's how they do it. So, growth is measured... I said language arts and math. This year, Science and Social Studies counted. That's why, that's part of the reason our denominator went up, why we went up to 155 possible points, okay? Also, I mentioned success-ready students, assessments like the ACT, the ASVAB, that our juniors take at the beginning, in November usually, October, November. And the ACT work keys are the assessments that typically show up on our success-ready students report for the APR. Students with advanced credit, in other words, that make a B or higher in a dual-credit or dual-enrollment class. So, our students who are taking college classes on campus, our students that are taking college classes at Missouri State as well, prior to graduation in 12th grade, we receive points if they score a B or higher in those. And then I mentioned our IRCs, our Industrial Recognized Credentials. Those are the... Like our ad contests count as industrial recognized as an IRC. We are... Our UCTE programs. We've had about four students last year that completed an IRC in one of their... In one of those classes. So, and that is, by the way, based off of the seniors who graduated in 2024, okay? The assessments part is based off of the seniors who graduated in 2023, because not all of the data was... Could be verified by the time APR came out. I can't tell you the reason why. Graduation rates are... It'll take the best of whatever our... Whatever previous graduation rate was the best, whether it's a four-year graduation rate, five or six-year. I don't think we're up to... But yeah, we are at seven-year. We've done enough seven-year data that we could use that. But typically, our four-year graduation rate hits us maximum points. So, that's another one. And then our graduate 180-day follow-up, I used an old presentation. That should be our 2023 graduates that appear on this report, okay? And I'm gonna give kudos to Amanda Osborne on this, because she's in charge of gathering that data, contacting the students. Last two years, she's sent out a Google form, and we've had about 50 to 60% success rate in contacting students that way. And then she makes very few phone calls beyond that, so. And then getting some great information. Our students, if we can... Some of our students, we can get ahold of, also attended VOTEC classes, and they do their own follow-up after 180 days. So, we work well... We work with... Not South Central anymore.
Somotec, yes.
Yes. With Somotec to gather some of that data as well. We share that information back and forth. So, what does the performance data tell us? Our student performance data increased in social... From 2023 in Science and Social Studies. We were steady in math. There were just a... We might have hit a tick lower, but not statistically significant. We were down in English Language Arts. I can't put my finger on any one particular brain level or, you know... The one thing that I can say is that, you know, sometimes from year to year, we have different pools of students who are taking different tests. And that makes a difference from time to time. And I'm kind of... I kind of have a feeling that that's part of the reason why we were down in English Language Arts. I'll talk... I'll show you more of that next month. We maximize our points in science. I mentioned we get points for status and for academic achievement, regular academic achievement, and for growth. Science was our only subject we received 100% points on for both areas. And so, kudos to our fifth, eighth and... Fifth and eighth science teachers and our biology teacher, Ms. Hatch, who was just in here. They had a great year on the MAP and EOC. And this is two years in a row that they've been way up there. As a matter of fact, I think in all three subject areas, we were either number one or number two in the SCA. We were close to maximizing points in social studies on the status side. I think we got... I think we received a little bit on the growth side, but not very much. We are in the middle of on-track category in math and English Language Arts. So, we need... It'll take a little bit for us to push to the maximum points on our status in math and EOL. I think I've said this statement every year since I've been here. And I think this is a statement that almost every school makes, the school district makes, is that we continue to see significant gaps between our student group data and the general population, okay? And so, whether it's students on free lunch, whether it's students who have IEPs or whatever those other categories were, you know, we just have that. We continue to have a significant gap between the two, between them and the overall population. We want to see a greater focus on academic improvement on all students. Ms. Hopper, a while ago, I was listening to her as I was traveling back from West Plains, and she mentioned that a little bit, that, you know, we're just trying to see that continuous improvement on I-Ready. We want to see that continuous improvement reflect back onto the MAP test as well. So, we feel like we have many things in place to make this happen. We just want to... It's just taking a little while for the shift to right itself. And then continue to build success-ready students. One area out of this has been our advanced credit or our IRCs. Even we... This particular line on our APR, we don't have maximum points on. And I think that's something we can work toward. And I feel like we're getting closer every year with our pool of dual enrollment and dual-credit classes expanding. I think we can make this number a lot higher. And one of the classes that we don't talk a lot about, we know we have an algebra class and we have an English class, but we also have a speech class that we have many students enrolled in. And that number... And students who receive a B in that class, that really expands the pool, because many of those students aren't in college algebra, and they're not in college comp. They're in... That may be their only advanced credit class that they have. So, we're looking at maximizing that data, so. Then, and then I mentioned the other part was the continuous improvement part of our APR, our comprehensive school improvement plan and our review of that. That's something we need to really get in gear on and get our committee back together and have quarterly data analysis over. On top of making it, you know, you guys make it a regular part of your board meeting by identifying what CSIP goals are in... You guys are covering with your agenda. But that's also something that, you know, I could probably do a better job of providing you with a little bit more data analysis besides the two times a year I bring in the balance scorecard and getting you as a board involved in our CSIP plan. Climate and culture survey, we gave a parent survey back in October, and that concluded right before Thanksgiving break. I may reopen it, because I wasn't satisfied with the number of responses we have. So, that may be... I may have to go a little bit more... I may have to go grassroots on this, just to get more responses. Kindergarten entry assessment, that is our, what we call the kindergarten observation form here on campus. I'll provide that number to you in January. But that's our assessment we give to all of our kindergartners the first couple of weeks of school to see just how kindergarten-ready they are. And then our individual career and academic plans, our attendance, our ICAPs. That's basically the four-year plan that our students put together, starting in eighth grade and going through high school. And they keep that on record. We've been doing that for many years. It just counts toward our APR now. Required documentation to Desi, our audit, our ASBR report, the data that I report to Desi four times, five, six times a year, every other month, basically. That all timely submission of those documents also count in our score, so. That's the rundown, the 30,000-foot view of our APR. Do you guys have any questions about our... How we do? You've heard a lot of data tonight, I can tell. All right. Dr. Spence, anything else?
I think that's it.
APR?
Thank you, Chris. I'm glad you could get back. We do have the video.
Oh, it finally came through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent it.
Oh, my God. EMFA?
I watched you push a button as you were doing it.
You probably did. This video is gonna be epic, and it just changed. It's not there, man.
It's down there, have you read it?
Oh, I've read it, okay. There we go. Okay, we're gonna download it. Hey, here we go. I guess we're gonna watch it in small view. It's even more small. That's what I get for trying to mess with that. All right, here we go.
Every one of these carts went into our subordinate trailer that we have. About parts themselves, Max.
Chilling writing and shopping carts, I don't know if that's school appropriate.
Oh, yeah, very. They opened two registers for us. We shut down each register one time, because we reached the maximum number of items that the register would allow. So, we had to make four different transactions tonight.
So, you had to use a self-checkout, though?
Yeah, we did not use this self-checkout now. We'd still be there, that is the case. Maybe that's what I needed to do, now.
Glad you made it back, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we ready to go on to winter retreat?
Yes, we have two retreats during the year. It's about time for our winter retreat. I threw this out in the Bay Area Report, but February 1st is when I propose having that meeting at 9:00. Location TBD. We'll talk about the location next month, but...
Yeah, we just have it here.
That's what we'll discuss. There's pros and cons to that. There's different options there, so we'll discuss that in January.
I can't come on that early. Like, not a day. Well, they just came out with the...
Oh, okay.
Basketball schedule this week. Like, 11:00 would probably be like the earliest.
We could move it back to a noon start, if you guys want to. Does that work for everyone?
That gets you... Is that good with that?
4:11?
Yeah, I mean...
Oh, we could do a...
We have an 8:30 game at West Plains, so we have to be back here by 11:00, too.
Saturday, the first, February 1st.
February 1?
2:00.
2:1, 2:5. At 11:00 a.m., location TBD. Okay.
All right. Anything else? Comments from guests? Then we'll move on to items for action. Apparently, we only have one.
Just that one.
That's to prove the...
Question.
...for the winter board retreat is Saturday, February 1st, beginning at 11:00.
Yeah.
Probably?
Probably, most likely-ish.
Is our motion to such effect?
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded for winter retreat to be Saturday, February 1st, 11 o'clock. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. No need for executive session?
Good.
All right. Then, receive a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.